I call this meeting to order at?
What time is it, Patty?
7:01.
7:01. 7:01, if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Mikulski.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We don't have any presentations, so we're moving directly to called audience. This is opportunity to come to the podium to speak on anything on or off the agenda. You have three minutes. You can, you have the option to state your name and address, but I'm opening called audience now at 7:02.
Hello, my name is Angela LaParte. I live on East Breckenridge in Ferndale. I am a member of the Lumbee Tribe of North Carolina, and I want to honor that I'm on Ashenap, Ashnabili. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous today. I don't know if you know this, but the Lumbee Tribe resonate, originates in North Carolina, but there was two large populations that moved, so there's actually quite a few of my tribe in southeast Michigan. In fact, going back to my great-grandmother, my family from the tribe had lived in this area. And I'm not here to speak on the resolution. I do want to say that I think the resolution is bare minimum. And I want to say that as a part of an indigenous tribe, part of being indigenous is connecting, and connecting not just to my own tribe, but indigenous people across the world. And when we came here, November of 2023, there was maybe hundreds of Palestinians that had passed away and had been killed. Now it's into the hundreds of thousands. And I hope, as I know most of you know our current representative and have spent time with her, taken pictures with her during Pride, I hope that you utilize your time to speak to her and how she utilizes our funds and how she's utilized our funds. Because she's utilized our funds to kill Palestinian children, or forgive me, fun bombs that are killing Palestinian children versus the healthcare here. I also ask that in terms of doing bare minimum, that we acknowledge as we get, approach the No Kings Protest, that part of doing that is not giving the king the resources to do to people, and that includes the Flock system. So our Flock system targets our neighbors to the South. So while you raise a Pan-African flag, you're also targeting our neighbors that are mostly black. The Flock system is being used by ICE, by, to attack people who have probably been on this landmass longer than any of us. Indigenous people that are indigenous to this land before the borders were created. So forgive me again, it's been a long day, been to powwows and everything today, but I just ask that you do more than what's symbolic, that you protect those that are vulnerable. And if you need more information, to reach out to your community, and I ask that you talk to those that look different than yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sharon Chess, President of the Ferndale Community Concert Band, to boast about our upcoming concert on October 26th, 3 o'clock in the Ferndale High School, and it is called Wicked and Amazing. So yeah, we're playing part of wicked music from that production and amazing grace as well, along with a couple of others. And then as far as being, hi, I'm Sharon Chess, I live at 1119 Earl Boulevard, and I have a concern in my neighborhood that I'd like to be addressed. At the corner of Camborne and Pinecrest, that would be the southeast corner. A real nice houses there, and they take really good care of their landscape. But on the very corner, they have bushes that are probably four to four and a half feet tall, and it presents as a hazard when you're coming west on Camborne and you want to make a left turn on, onto Pinecrest. You can't see. And I do that so often because I, that's my primary travel road, and I am so cautious not to run into a pedestrian or a bike rider, even another vehicle. So my request would be that, I know this is the only corner that I'm familiar with, but there has to be other corners similar, and my request would be to create some type of ordinance where anybody that has landscape on a corner lot, that presents a hazard, that it be kept at like two, two and a half feet, just for safety reasons. So, thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. My name is Peggy Harp, and I live on West Saratoga. And I don't have a lot to say tonight, just that looking forward to the, to the town halls and asking that we, you know, since we've hosted Flock's, you know, employees here, that we get, you know, some other folks that maybe have a different perspective than the people who are going to make profit off of us renewing this contract, like the ACLU or, or even some of the other, which I don't really have a list of them on hand, but other people who are looking into the harms of technology, just so that we have a balanced view, that we've heard enough from Flock. And yeah, I mean, I know the ACLU, you know, has been talking about this for a long time, so thank you for your time.
Any other for public comment? Closing public comment at 7:09 PM. There is no public hearing tonight, so I'm moving on to the consent agenda. Item 7A, approval of the September 29th, 2025 meeting minutes. 7B, approval of the resolution confirming Indigenous Peoples' Day. 7C, approval of the resolution recognizing October as Long-Term Care Residence Rights Month. 7D, approval of the declaration and notice to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the Wilson Park Walkway and Playground Improvement Project. 7E, approval of the declaration and notice to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the Martin Road Park Walkways and Pavilion Project. 7F, approval of the one-year agreement with Oak Park, Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, Lethr Village, and Sacra to use the southwest storage yard as a leaf transfer site. 7G, approval of contract with Rolls Mechanical for plumbing maintenance and the amount not to exceed $30,000 annually. 7H, approval of the contract with Great Lake Power, Great Lakes Power and Lighting for electrical maintenance in an amount not to exceed $30,000 annually. 7I, approval to issue a purchase order to Nationwide Construction Group for guardian, guardian, guard rail repairs in the amount of $15,000. 7J, approval of the amendment to professional services agreement with Plant Moran in the amount not to exceed $85,000. 7K, approval of payment for emergency gas service repairs by Consumers Energy in the amount of $9,315.69. 7L, approval of contract with Rolls Mechanical for HVAC maintenance in the amount not to exceed $59,000 annually. And 7M, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the Finance Director and subject to review by the Council Finance Committee.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. If we have roll call, please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Consent agenda item passes, and then I believe Councilmember Johnson was going to read a resolution.
Oh, sure. A resolution confirming Indigenous Peoples' Day. The City of Ferndale, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, is a duly organized and existing unit of local government created under the laws of the State of Michigan, and the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in a 1970, in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And in 1990, representatives from 120 indigenous nations at the first Continental Conference on 500 years of Indian resistance unanimously passed a resolution to transform Columbus Day into an opportunity to reveal historic truths about pre-existing indigenous cultures and peoples that have survived a most often violent colonization process and continue to exist and thrive in present-day America. And the United States endorsed the United Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples on December 16th, 2010, and Article 15 of that declaration states, "Indigenous peoples have the right to the dignity and diversity of their cultures, traditions, histories, and aspirations, which shall be appropriately reflected in education and public information. States should take effective measures in consultation and cooperation with the indigenous peoples concerned to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination and to promote tolerance, understanding, and good relations among indigenous peoples and all other segments of society." And the State of Michigan recognizes the presence of the three major tribal groups in our state today, the Chipewa, also known as the Ojibwe, the Ottawa, or the Odoa, and the Parowatomi, or the Bodoadmik, who have lived upon this land since time immemorial and values the progress our society has accomplished through Native American governance, thought, culture, and contributions. And many communities and municipalities in the land we now call Michigan have passed resolutions to officially recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October, and the resolution states that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous peoples on this land and to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the Odoa, the Ojibwe, and the Bodoadmik and other indigenous peoples that, that they contribute to society. And on this second Monday of October, we should honor the historic and contemporary significance of indigenous peoples, their cultures, their governments, and their ancestral lands that also became known as the Americas, and we celebrate their contributions to communities throughout the land we now call Michigan, the United States, and all over the world. The City of Ferndale does hereby confirm October 13th, 2025 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Michigan to uplift our country's indigenous roots, history, and contributions.
There's one more resolution, recognizing October as Long-Term Care Residence Rights Month. There are 1.2 million individuals living in 14,800 nursing homes and over 1 million individuals living in 32,200 assisted livings and residential care facilities. And the Federal Nursing Home Reform Act of 1987 guarantees, guarantees residents their rights, their individual rights in order to promote and maintain their dignity and autonomy. And all residents should be aware of their rights so that they may be empowered to live with dignity and self-determination. And we wish to honor and celebrate these citizens to recognize their rich individuality and to reaffirm their right to vote and participate politically, including the right to have a say in their care. Individuals and groups across the country will be celebrating Residents' Rights Month with the theme Stand With Me, highlighting the importance of solidarity and support for residents who stand up and advocate for their rights, as well as the value of encouraging the community to join residents in sharing their voices. The City of Ferndale does hereby proclaim October 2025 as Long-Term Care Residence Rights Month and encourages all citizens to join in these important observances. Before we move on to the regular agenda, I also wanted to point out that this same resolution was sent to other communities, municipalities, and it is my hope that once I hear that they will be also recognizing Residents' Rights Months for the month of October as well. I'll keep you posted. But as of now, we're moving on to the regular agenda. Item 8A is a special condition assessment with WIS, Janney, Elster, and Associates Incorporated.
Okay, so a little bit of context. Well, first off, this is a approval of the recommendation to spend $55,000 in not to exceed with WJE for specialized engineering reports. So general context, we use engineers in the facilities department when we need technical solutions, when we have an issue that we can't necessarily see. And when I say see, I just mean it's something that you can't see. You see a hole in wall, you know it needs to be fixed. We can't always determine just with sight or my expertise what the problem is and what the solution is to fix it. So what we do is we engage with a engineering firm, they do some testing, they provide inspection, assessment, detailed reporting. Those reports define problems, they develop remedies, they narrow costs, and they help prioritize the work. WJE has performed work for the city in the past. They did the assessment of the Kulik boiler roof, and we had an issue there. Their report directly led us to find a vendor to put jack stands, I want to call them jack stands, but that's not the word for them, to support the roof so that it didn't collapse and that it was safe to work in and address the electrical issues and the boiler problems we had in the basement. And they did good work, they were very timely. So they're also, they've been engaged by Newman Smith for the Martin Road Park Construction Project to do structural engineering. They're an exemplary in their field. When we were looking for someone to provide their expertise for the Kulik boiler roof, I reached out to Giffords, Fishbeck, WGI, Edge Design, other engineering firms, professional services that we worked with, and they all said, you should use WJE. So the scope of this specific detailed work, there are four locations. Fire station number one, fire station number two, there are CMU walls, which is basically a block wall, there's some cracking, there's some floor with a little bit of separation. You can't really see from the pictures, but you can see at the very top, that's a CMU wall, there's some cracking. We just want to get a look at that. Some of them, we don't feel are a safety concern or anything like that, but it has probably been long enough to where there hasn't been an engineering study that we should definitely have one. Specifically, there are some capital improvements that are going to take place in the building, and it makes sense as a starting point to get some engineering done. So City Hall Police Department, we walk past them all the time, there are limestone capped or encapsulated columns. There's a picture of that below, that's actually an I-beam. I'll show, we actually have a detail from the 1966 plan that shows in red, the I-beam that goes through that column that's surrounded by the limestone, and then there's the anchor in the footing. And I've sent that to WJE, and they'll be doing an onsite inspection if this gets approved. So DPW main yard, there's a structural column in a basement. I just took a picture of the steps going into the basement, because you can barely see in the basement, but it's just an empty storage room that importantly holds up the lunchroom and the mechanic's office. So pretty simple process, they come out, they inspect, they review, we review with them, and then we repair based on their recommendations. So budget and schedule, they've provided a quote for $45,000 in work for the four defined assessments that I just went over. This approval also includes a not to exceed with $11,000 for as needed support for contingency and other projects. And I want to point out the facilities capital budget does have engineering budget with repairs and replacements. For example, fire station number one, there are a number of line items that we have prioritized for replacement in the capital budget, and you can see engineering structural evaluation report, $11,910 for fire station one. And then you'll see as well, there's a lot of line items for engineering coming up next year because there are some planned renovations through the capital. So the schedule for this work, two to three weeks inspections will be done, two to three weeks later, we will have reports. As needed contingency, so follow-up. First possibility is that they do these studies on one of these four specific areas, and that we need more information needed on the City Hall columns, or the DPW column, or something at the fire station. It is actually worse than we see it as being, and then it requires a follow-up study, so I've added a little bit of contingency for that. There are also other projects that we potentially need to do. The plan is to spend a little bit of money at DPW. One of the things that we need to fix is we have a rooftop unit on the top of the building that has, this is actually built on a garage. You can see this garage wasn't really built to hold a rooftop unit. I'm assuming 30 years ago when this was added, the person that was standing here at the dais did study before they supported it with these columns, but I don't know that. So I want to make sure, we're going to potentially add a larger unit because we're conditioning more space. That's a three-ton unit, and a three-ton HVAC unit weighs about 1.5 tons, and I'm not sure if the roof can hold it, so we need to get a professional assessment of whether the roof has the ability to actually house that unit. Kulik, limited assemblies cost estimate, so getting these more refined numbers at a building like Kulik would be costly, but that is potentially something that we could look at. An assemblies cost is something that looks a little more specifically at one piece of a mechanical system, and then comes up with a more precise cost than we have put together so far. And then I'll just mention that these, these reports will likely generate smaller maintenance budgets that are already maintenance, or that are already budgeted for under maintenance. Those will happen. Any larger scope items that are generated through these reports will obviously return to council. And thank you, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. So these, the amounts that you've proposed, these are really just to evaluate or to assess?
Yep. As well as generate a report, so, yep.
Through the chair. How is this different than what we generated in 2021 with the Bureau Veritas report?
So these are more specialized. Bureau Veritas report, they didn't look into anything. So a lot of what they did is what was, when I say this is a problem that we can see or can't see, so Bureau Veritas comes out, they, if they were looking at this room, they would scan it, they would measure carpet, walls, ceiling, they're just looking at what they can see, they're putting that on paper. This is something that's really looking at structural, like this is a more technical problem. Can a column hold up a certain amount of weight? What is that weight? If it can't, or if it's degraded metal, what do we need to do to brace that structure to make it safe? So these, it's more like structural, technical, engineering, whereas Bureau Veritas report is a standard condition assessment.
So we added in this contingency for these additional follow-up things, I mean, how likely is it that we would utilize some of this contingency to do these assessments on Kulik? It's obviously a hot topic right now, so.
I'm happy to address that. The broader issue at this time is really just the ownership issue around the Kulik Center. Obviously, no solution has yet been presented where the city has the opportunity to control that particular parcel, and for us to invest further in that type of research at a time when we don't control it is ill-advised. But in the event that something did change, and this council were amenable and that opportunity presented itself, we could put those funds to use, and we would strongly recommend they do be put to use before entering into any sort of agreement, so we are aware of what our obligations would be.
So we don't currently have an agreement with this, we're not close?
We are, we are no closer than we've been at any point in the past, I would say. There's, there's no formal agreement, and there has not been any recent movement in that regard.
And what's the term of this, this contract, sorry, how? It's a...
It's just a not to exceed for $55,000.
To exceed 55, so, so there would be a chance to hold back the contingency? There's no immediate urgency? We could try to re, get the conversations with the schools?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we, for context, we've provided the schools with the preliminary Phase 1 study that we conducted on the land that we are considering as our side of the potential land swap, but we have not received any follow-up information of that. So I feel the city's kind of gotten to the point that it can get to in terms of what we, what we can do to keep that conversation moving along, and what due diligence needed to be done on the parcel that we own, looking, I guess, you know, just kind of feedback from our partners at this point.
And when did we send that information to the schools?
Within last week and a half, two weeks.
Through the chair, but the, the point being that we would be authorizing $44,000 with a contingency of that extra amount that we could potentially hold back if, if we don't see the Kulik deal moving forward?
Yes.
Through the chair, the 44, the 11,000 contingency isn't just about the Kulik, it's also if we need more to follow up on the columns at City Hall, or the structural check at DPW, or the smaller maintenance budget. Well, actually, that doesn't make sense, smaller maintenance budgeted, larger scope. Oh, that's just a bullet point.
Oh, yeah.
But the other two items.
Yeah, you are absolutely correct. There, there may be other uses of those contingencies than just the Kulik.
And you said the timeline, sorry, Jim, the timeline on this was, you said two, three?
Two, three weeks for inspection, two to three weeks to generate a report.
Through the chair, this is, this is probably a dumb question, but knowing that we had the facilities assessment that showed that, for instance, going back to that slide with the, the fire station and the crack in the wall, and that that was in poor condition, do we, do we need to know how poor it is, or could we just go forth and get a, a quote on repair?
Well, yeah, so in this type of situation, I think we don't really know if the, if the block wall is structurally sound. We could patch it, certainly. I don't know that I necessarily trust a contractor in that type of a context to provide a solution for you. It's sometimes better when you know that you may have to spend money on a repair to have a third-party engineer come out, look at it, tell you exactly what's going on, and then make a suggestion on what to repair. Because sometimes a contractor has a reason to tell you that something's worse than it actually is, and this just ensures that that type of situation doesn't happen, and we don't really have a skilled tradesperson that does block wall repair, tuck pointing, masonry, so.
Okay. Before we continue with discussion, actually, I should have made a motion to discuss it.
Oh, right.
Let's do that.
And I move we approve the purchase order to WIS, Janney, Elsner, and Associates, Inc. for special condition assessments for up to $55,000 from the facilities maintenance budget in account 101256977.000 as submitted by the DPW Director.
And now we'll continue discussion. If there's any more discussion. Seeing none, then we'll have a, a vote.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes. And with that being said, the motion to, just a second. The motion... The motion to approve the purchase order to Wiss, Janney, Elsner and Associates, Inc. for special condition assessments for up to fifty-five thousand from facilities maintenance account one zero one dash two six five dash nine seven seven dot zero 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 as submitted by the DPW director has passed. All right. We're now moving on to the Vester Avenue parking improvement, item eight B on the regular agenda.
Oh, I, I move we approve and adopt the Vester Avenue parking study and authorize project expenditures not to exceed seven thousand dollars.
Support.
Alright, so this agenda item is to look at changing Vester Avenue to one way following the recommendations of the Traffic Improvement Association study. So what would change and why? The goal is to add public parking, preserve access and enhance safety. Configuration of the design plan is two way traffic. I'm going to show a design at the very end that goes over, oversight, looks at the, the way that they've created, designed the, the street. So two way Woodward alley, from Woodward to the public alley is two way traffic. So that way trucks, vehicles, deliveries can still turn into the alleys and the same can pull from the alley back to Woodward or enter the one way. And then from that one way eastbound to Bermuda is one way. So parking is head in thirty degree north side. Again, apologize for the scratches, but the south curb is where the driveline will be and then the north curb will have thirty degree pull in parking bays. You can see at the very end what that looks like. So we also will potentially, tentatively, right now have a loading zone scheduled from six to eleven AM. There's some businesses on both sides of the street. We want to make sure that if we have a narrow ten foot driveline, that we don't have trucks blocking it throughout the day. So again, alley trucks will be westbound only and there'll be some turn prohibitions. So some key numbers, total spaces on the public street, on Vester, public parking after this will be twenty-seven. Will net fourteen versus what we have out there currently. The Vester Flats curb, so right in front of that, that curb in front of the construction project, that will not be able to be striped until the spring because they are using most of the right away for their construction. Westbound diversion, we did a parking study through the Traffic Improvement Association. They found three hundred to five hundred and seventy-five vehicles a day traveling westbound. On average, it changed during peak times. Truck diversion is about thirty-five eastbound, thirty westbound. And then I've just kind of put a map up here so you can see if, if a truck does drive down Vester, they can easily get back to Nine Mile through Bermuda, turn back around, get on Woodward. So this is kind of like the reasoning behind the traffic pattern that we took. There were some various options that the city put together as far back as like twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen on doing westbound versus eastbound. Really, this is the best design that we can do short term. So again, why? This keeps direct Woodward access to businesses. It maintains two way alley truck operations. It limits trucks entering importantly nearby residential streets and the narrower lane actually supports calmer speeds. And clear sign markings will make this a pretty simple one way street. So cost scheduling ops, the cost, luckily, we were, we had just paved Vester Street this year, so we were already striping it. Striping it is within the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Paving contingency signage, we're going to do internally. DPW does have budget within major streets of which this is to do signs. So we'll be responsible for the sign package and we've already started designing them. So we should be good to go there. Schedule, we're going to finalize the details. We're communicating with the police department on the rollout. There's some administrative things that we have to do as well. But it's basically signs, stripes, communications. DDA is going to do a little bit of merchant outreach and then we're going to be good to go. So briefly, I'll just mention that one way tighter lane, there are trade offs like all these projects. Snow, de-icing may take a little bit longer versus wider majors. This is parking dependent. And then I, I'll use this to just say that the long term best fix, more costly fix is reconfiguring the right away to enable forty-five degree angled parking. And that would be by cutting back, moving the curb closer to the sidewalk. And then finally, this is the design that the Traffic Improvement Association put together. You can see there is a two way lane up till the public alleys and then it's one way eastbound only. There are thirty degree angled parking. And they've actually need to adjust because there is no longer a driveway in front of, I should remember what it's called, Smokehouse, the new barbecue place on Vester. So we can actually, I think, add at least one more parking spot. So again, this is, the agenda item is to approve the plan and to get working, but the budget is already there through the local paving program and our maintenance budget.
Can you go back to the arrows where you showed the, I just want to just. So this arrow, this means that this is going to be one way on, on Vester?
Yep, towards Bermuda.
Towards Bermuda.
And then the parking will be angled towards traffic, so you can just pull to the left up to the curb.
And then Bermuda will be?
Unchanged.
Two ways still.
Yep, yep. Yeah, and I can kind of show the traffic pattern here too.
Okay, I guess what's confusing me is right there at Vester, there's those two arrows going in opposite directions.
Yeah, so anyone that turns, so that's basically so that way someone can come out of the public alley and not have nowhere to go.
Like trucks that are.
Okay.
Yes, exactly, because it would be stuck there if they could only turn left. And they, they probably wouldn't be able to make that angle because there's a power pole there anyway, but we also don't want to divert all of them through Vester and out of the neighborhood. We want them to easily get to Woodward and get onto a major road.
Through the chair, I think a lot of those trucks end up going through to Camborn anyways. They don't usually turn on Vester, but maybe smaller trucks do.
Well, yeah, and I think most of the trucks that were found in the study were for local deliveries. So it was people specifically delivering to the businesses north of Vester through the alley or south of Vester.
I guess my question really, this is more to Chief Emmy. So transition to something like this is obviously going to take a minute and people are going to need to get used to it and people are going to make mistakes. And I'm wondering, like, what is a deployment plan for PD to sort of kind of be on site essentially for some reasonable adjustment period of time? Not writing tickets or being punitive, just more like, hey, oops, sorry, let's get you back the way you need to go or, or reminding people like, hey, just a reminder, this is one way now. I think that might help because it's a little bit more authority figure type situation than just, like, I don't know, a business owner running out and being like, you're going the wrong way or a resident being like, you're going the wrong way. Is there some plan for that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it would be kind of as needed. I think that once the striping is done, the transition is kind of the difficult part. Once it's been striped and signed, I think it'd be glaringly obvious, but we still plan on a, a educational period of two weeks to a month till we feel satisfied. Usually in that two week period, there'll be an education and people understand what's going on and it'll become blatantly obvious with the, the striping and the extra signage. But yeah, there would definitely be a, like a soft rollout.
And this doesn't have any effect on our emergency services routes or anything like that?
I, you know, I can speak of the, the police department, but the fire department was in on this discussion with the engineer. We all felt like this was the best compromise, so we were part of the discussion. We wouldn't be here at this point had the fire chief and Ivan Appen consulted.
Through the chair. Perhaps there's an opportunity for the auxiliary police, maybe on Fridays and Saturdays from, you know, like five, six o'clock to, you know, nine or so to just have one or two people there. If someone tries to turn in, they can direct them, you know, show them the one way sign so that people get familiar with it. That might be a good opportunity.
Absolutely.
Through the chair. So one thing we don't have right now on Vester is handicap parking. And given that we're adding so much parking, is there an opportunity to add at least one handicap space? If not, more than one?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
And we have them on Nine Mile. I don't know why we didn't have one.
I'm not a hundred percent where there is a curb cut that would be appropriate for the location of a handicap spot, but.
Maybe where that driveway used to be with them.
Unfortunately, we re-curbed that, so there's not a ramp there. That was, that was my thought as well, Jameson, is I'm not certain that there is an existing curb cut with a ramp. So that would be an additional cost to pull out sidewalk and put in a ramp to accommodate it.
Yeah. I really think that that's something we should consider. You know, we can't consider ourselves a accessible community without providing that on a street where you're providing fourteen additional parking spaces and none of them are going to be handicap accessible.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly look at it internally. I just, just looking at it, I'm hesitant to say it would be great to put one here because I, to do it, we actually have to locate a curb cut. I'm not even really sure where the central location, you could say in front of Valentine and Smokehouse, but it may make sense to be a little bit more closer to the public alley. So that's something that we can talk about internally.
Yeah, I would watch for doing something like in front of Valentine or the Smokehouse because I know today Valentine likes to rent those spaces out and I don't want to restrict them because all of a sudden we have a handicap space that they can't lease, you know, for the summer for their patio.
Yeah, and part of this too, so we do have to coordinate with Vester Flats about some accommodations that they're making in the right away. So this is a, a further conversation we can have with them. They're already, they're already kind of reconstructing the right away in front of their building. So maybe there's an opportunity to there to kind of partner with them and figure something out closer to the public alley.
That would be great. Other thing, this is just an observation. Thank you very much for not doing the Royal Oak thing and have back in parking.
Easy, didn't even think of it.
I, I think this is a great idea, in, in large part because I'm the one that came up with it. I just wish that I suggested the angle parking. I didn't even think about that as, as an opportunity to increase the parking, but it'll also increase our revenue.
So through the chair, on that topic, so that's going to be its own zone? They'll have new zone parking over there?
Yes, it was al- already intended to be a zone because it had existing public parking. It'll just have more spaces.
And then how long do we anticipate having the parking set up like this? I, I know that this is partly to relieve the area due to the one forty-one Vester construction and I can't remember what the timeline is for that to be.
That construction is eighteen months at minimum, I would assume. So if this is successful after eighteen months, it could remain a permanent transition, but at the very least, that's the timeline.
And one last question, have we spoken to any of the business owners in this area about this transition?
No, that messaging would have to occur once we know that the project plan is approved and we can move forward. The next would be to notice the businesses and provide an opportunity for comment.
I imagine they probably know about it right now.
Yeah, I, I will say that there's at least one business owner who is aware that we are pursuing, that we have been pursuing this at their request for additional, some additional parking relief.
Give me, I'm a little spacey tonight, but that was just three parking spots, right? How many parking spots were at an angle?
No, that, that, yeah, that was just demonstrating.
All throughout.
All these yellow.
Yeah, if you look at the, the yellow.
Touch screen.
And did we say how many, I don't know, how many would that potentially be?
Twenty-seven total public spaces.
Twenty-seven, okay.
Which is fourteen more than we currently have available.
Okay.
And actually now we're thinking fifteen, twenty-eight if, because of that one with the drive at.
Correct, but if we go with, if we do two eighty A, I think.
May or may not, to be determined. We'll lose one. Did we make a motion?
We did, yes.
I guess I'm going to call the question.
Well, there, what do you mean?
Call for the vote?
Oh, call for the vote.
It seemed like, it seemed like we were.
What question?
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes. So the motion to approve and adopt the Vester Avenue Parking Study and authorize project expenditure expenditures to not to exceed seven thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right. There are no other items on the regular agenda tonight. So I am going to now open it up for call to council. We're the city manager. I'm opening it up to you to call on department heads for updates.
Parks?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few updates from the Parks Department tonight. First of all, two Saturdays ago, we had our fifteenth annual fall festival where we welcomed more than six hundred attendees to come out to the event. We had a bunch of different amenities and activities for everyone. We had the trick or treat trail toward the end of it where everybody had a bag full of candy that they took home to commemorate the event. And I want to say that this was either our first or second largest fall festival event ever. Six hundred is a huge number. We were busy. It was way hotter than, than it's typically, typical of that part of the year. But we want to thank everybody for coming out and having a great time. We want to thank our staff members, our volunteers, our vendors, our partnering departments. And we want to thank the, the sponsors that helped us put on this event. Those include the Garlic Artichoke Foundation, who's been a yearly sponsor for several years now. By Credit Union, Hand and Stone Massage, Collier Plumbing, Heating and Cooling, IEP Urgent Care, Jim Schaefer and Associates, the Detroit Curling Club and Domino's Pizza. So thank you again to those sponsors for helping bring in such a wonderful community event for the benefit of the public. Also want to talk about some upcoming sporting events. The youth soccer championships will be taking place this weekend. That's an opportunity where our two hundred and fifty or so youth athletes will get to participate in the different championships of their divisions. They will take place at Martin Road Park beginning at nine AM and some of the games will be bleeding over into that Sunday and or Monday. I think there was a scheduling issue too. The adult softball championships will be taking place on October thirtieth beginning at six thirty PM at Martin Road Park. That will see the culmination of our men's and co-ed leagues. And then registration will be opening soon for our winter youth basketball clinics. Just keep an eye out for our Facebook page and any announcements that we put out about that. We should be opening that up relatively soon. And then finally, we just want to make sure everybody keeps to save the date for December sixth when we'll be partnering with DDA to put on our Santa at Shiffer event. There we shall have some holiday crafts. You'll get the opportunity to meet with Santa, sit down and give him your Christmas list, writing letters to the North Pole and some other goodies that we have in store. So again, that date is December sixth for Santa at Shiffer. That's all.
Okay, next we have the Clerk's Office.
Good evening. Just a reminder that there is an election for Mayor and City Council on November fourth, twenty twenty-five in which the Mayor and two City Council positions will be available. Currently, we have sent out five thousand four hundred and seventy-five ballots. About nineteen percent of those have been returned, so please keep on returning your ballots. Regarding early in person. Regarding early in-person voting, you can vote in person at the early voting site if you like at the Hazel Park Community Center, also the Waterford Oaks Event Center as well. That is going to begin on Saturday, October 25th, and end on Sunday, November 2nd. It will be open 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. each day. The one exception to that is Thursday, and that's open from noon to 8:00 p.m. And of course, if you want to vote in person on Election Day, that will be on November 4th, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at your regularly scheduled polling location. If you have any questions, feel free to give our office a call. My number is 248-336-4366, or visit the city's website for more information. Thank you.
Sorry, Dean, did you say how many ballots were returned?
Right now, we have 1,040.
1,040.
DPW?
Yep, so real quick, leaf pickup begins next week. Weekly service precedes trash collection. Goes for six weeks, ends the week of Thanksgiving. Check the website and social media for maps and instructions. I actually like to just put a map up real quick so we can all see it. If I can. Should have tried this before I got up here. No, we can't. Okay, that's as good as I can get, but you can see your trash routes are up, and the day for leaf pickup is overlaid on the trash day, so if you're normally, trash pickups Tuesday, you are now on Monday, and then follows throughout the week. And I think this is going to be a lot better than it was last year because it's going to mean that everyone gets six weeks of potential to put their leaves out at the curb. That's all I have.
That's it for department head updates.
All right. Then I start, I started here last time. Okay, starting over here. Mayor Proton Mikulski.
I have nothing further tonight.
I have nothing either. Polika?
Nothing this evening.
I think the only thing I had was something that's probably relevant to Bruce and parking. It's just making sure that signage and the dot is very clear about, on all the levels, about what zone and, and what people need to do to get their parking. I think some folks kind of get to an upper level, and then they are having a hard time kind of remembering or seeing something. So if, just if we can make sure the signage and the dot is explicit and clear on all the levels, what zone they're in, what they're supposed to do to pay for parking, I think. Thank you, Bruce. That's all I have.
And I have nothing tonight, so with that being said, this meeting is adjourned at 7:55. Thank you.